Good evening, everybody. We're going to call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Corbin?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Ms. Witchy?
Here.
Mr. McIrvin?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you, Jason. First item on the agenda this evening is a very special proclamation.
A proclamation. Whereas Dell Mead has been volunteering Monday mornings at City Hall Information Desk since February 24, 2000, and is celebrating sixteen years as a volunteer for the city of Renton on February 24, 2016. And whereas Dell has given approximately 3,465 hours of her time during the past sixteen years to greet visitors and staff, making everyone feel at ease with her special brand of warmth, sense of humor, and personality. And whereas Dell celebrated her 93rd birthday on January 29, 2016, and whereas Dell personifies and exemplifies embracing a zest for life. And whereas Dell, with her late husband, John, moved to the Renton area in 1955, when John secured work at the Boeing Company. And whereas Dell was a founding member of the Renton Close Bank in 1965 and has worked tirelessly for the organization, serving in various board positions, including president, and currently holds President Amaretta's status with the local organization. And whereas Dell joins the Optimists International of Renton on January 1, 1973, and has held every leadership position, including parliamentarian and president, within the organization, and currently holds Life Member status. And whereas Dell served as Renton's own city clerk from October 1, 1972 to June 30, 1982, during her 23 years of service as a City of Renton employee. And whereas we all, citizens, staff, and city officials alike, thank Dell for her dedication, graciousness, helpfulness, talent, professionalism, and ambassadorship to and on behalf of the city of Renton. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the city of Renton, do hereby proclaim February 24, 2016 to be Dell Mead Day in the city of Renton. And I encourage all citizens to join me in wishing Dell a very happy birthday and thanking her for her sixteen years of dedicated volunteer service. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed this 22nd day of February 2016. Signed, Dennis Law, Mayor of the city of Renton.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corbin.
I move that council concur in the proclamation.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corbin, seconded by Mr. Person, that council concur with this proclamation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Dell, this is... I think I feel more honored to give this to you than any of these proclamations I've ever handed out.
Thank you so much. This really means a lot to me.
What we're going to do, Dell, if you don't mind, is get the council down here to take a picture and say a few words. Cheers. Two, three. Alex, if you don't mind, I'd like to invite all of our volunteers, friends, and people who are here to get a picture with us.
That's an excellent idea.
Now it's supposed to frown.
Let's make sure we enjoy the meal.
One more. One, two, three.
Jay, you need to flip phone.
I think it's right-handed, and I'm left-handed.
So who are we going to propose with for World Spay Day? Do we have a cat? Hold up.
Right, exactly.
My name is Dell Mead. Dolores Mead. And I live in the city of Renton. I've been in my house for 57 years. And I love the city of Renton. I love the people of the city of Renton. It's a wonderful place to live. And I'm overwhelmed by this honor. Doing just what comes naturally and what I love to do. Working for the city was one of the most wonderful experiences in my lifetime. And I'm 93 years old. So that is a big item. And I thank each and every one of you for this wonderful honor. And I'm overwhelmed.
Thanks, Dell. We are...
I love you for being here.
We are just honored to have you as part of this community. And you've just been great for so many previous councils and mayors and all of the citizens that you have served over these years. And we just feel really privileged to have you here. So congratulations and happy birthday.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we have another proclamation?
We do. Proclamation. Whereas pets provide companionship to 65% of U.S. households. And whereas 2.4 million healthy and adoptable cats and dogs are put down in animal shelters each year due to a lack of critical resources and public awareness. And whereas nearly 90% of pets living in poverty and 98% of community, feral and stray cats, are unaltered. And whereas spaying and neutering has been shown to dramatically reduce the number of animals who are put down in animal shelters. And whereas programs exist to assist with the cost of spaying or neutering community cats and pets living in poverty. And whereas veterinarians, national and local animal protection organizations, and private citizens have joined together again to advocate the spaying or neutering of pets and community cats on World Spay Day 2016. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the city of Renton, do hereby proclaim February 23, 2016 to be World Spay Day 2016 in the city of Renton. And I encourage all citizens to join me in this special observance by having their own pets spayed or neutered or by sponsoring the spaying or neutering of a pet in need. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed this 22nd day of February 2016. Signed, Dennis Law, Mayor of the city of Renton.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corbin.
I move that council concur with the proclamation.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corbin, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with this proclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Jason. Moving on to administrative report, Mr. Covington.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Council members, a couple of items I wanted to just bring to your attention. The Renton History Museum has received a grant of $10,000 from First Financial Northwest Foundation for renovation museum lobby this spring. That award will be combined with the grant they received in the amount of $20,500 from Building for Culture Award and the for culture in King County organizations. And that project will begin in April. If you've driven down on South Second today, you've noticed that we are doing some tree work on South Second, right across from Renton High School. We're removing some dead branches and correcting branch growth. So there are some temporary lane closures this week while we're doing that work. We're also doing some roadwork in a number of other places. Just want to bring those to the public's attention. In the area of Shalan Avenue Southeast, between Southeast Second and Fourth, doing some paving work. 156th Avenue, between 144th and Southeast Sixth, we're doing some paving. We're working, continue to work in the area of Main Avenue between Second and Third to allow that development project to continue. So there are a couple lanes closed there. We are installing a signal on South Seventh Street and Shattuck Avenue. We are doing some sewer main maintenance and cleaning. And so Rainier Avenue, between South Seventh and South Second, be aware of some partial lane closures there. We're doing some partial lane closures in the area of Sunset Boulevard, between Anacortes or in the area of Sunset and Anacortes for some utility line inspection. And finally, as the council is aware, we continue to have Logan Avenue North closed through that construction project. I'd like to ask Public Works Administrator Greg Zimmerman to come up to provide the council with some information regarding our solid waste contract transition.
Thank you, Jay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have an item associated, as Jay said, with the solid waste collection contract that I want to quickly make you aware of. As you know, Republic Services has been selected as the future upcoming solid waste collection contractor for the city for a 10-year period. And we've already started negotiations with Republic Services. As you'll recall, our selection process was a RFP process rather than a low bid. So the first step is that we sit down with the contractor, go through all of the provisions, and come up with an agreed-upon price that should pretty closely match what the request for proposal was. So those discussions have already started. They should go on for a few weeks. We don't know exactly how long they'll take, but we're going to try to complete those as soon as possible. When that's done, we have a number of things that have to be done in order to begin the next contract. First of all, we bring the proposal back to the council for presentation and for your adoption and approval of the new contract. When the contract's signed, the contractor has to go through equipment procurement, buying the trucks and so forth, and outfitting them. Route development, because it's a new contractor that has to go through... Hopefully, they will use the established routes, but they have to do their own route development. Employee development and hiring and training. Cart and container relabeling. Customer data and billing. As you know, we're transferring the billing function to the contractor. Right now, the city does it. And then public education and outreach, particularly for the 4,700 customers that will be switching over to our current garbage collection schedule that the rest of the city has. Typically, with other cities, that transition period to go smoothly, including changing the billing, takes about 10 to 12 months. It's a long process because of all of these steps that are involved. In the meantime, our current contract with Waste Management expires on May 1. The date that we've mentioned to you previously about extending the Waste Management contract to is November 1. We talked about that in order to take care of these transition steps and so forth. We and... We, the staff, and Republic Services believe that probably it's going to take a little bit longer than that, given the 10 to 12 months this process usually takes with other cities. But fortunately, we have an extension clause in the Waste Management contract that we have the ability, the city does, at our request to extend the existing contract two different times for a period of up to two years each time. And it's at our discretion. When we do the extension, the current contract holds, the rates hold. Everything is as it is in the current contract. So there's no penalty or anything to the city. The contract just keeps going forward as it is now. What we're recommending doing, one provision of the contract is, for us to extend the contract, we have to issue a letter of intent to Waste Management. And our deadline is next Monday, February 29. So the whole question is, what should the date be? How long should we ask to extend the contract while we're going through the negotiations and the transition period? We believe that the best approach to this would be to ask for an extension till November 1, the date that we've been discussing with you. See if it's possible to get the transition done in that period. Hopefully, we can. If not, the city has that second extension date that's available in the contract. We could do this one more time if we had to go further. So what we'd like to do is issue an intent to extend the contract with Waste Management to November 1, understanding we might have to come back to you one more time for one more extension.
Good, thank you, Greg. Counsel, have any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I guess I'm concerned that... Of the November 1 date, from my experience of being around, is the... If we think we can get it done by November 1, it'll most likely be January 1 or February 1. So I would encourage you to... You know, I'm all for the extension, but I'm just thinking that just from what I heard from you this evening is you may not get it done by November 1. And I'd hate... You know, people's jobs are in jeopardy from Waste Management if they don't get transferred over to the other company. And I would hate to see them be in the holiday season and then not know if they have a job or not.
Well, realistically speaking, we don't really believe that November or December would be a good time to change providers, anyway. So would you suggest that the first date of the extension be after the 1st of the year?
That's...
And then come up with a definitive date?
Yeah, I'd say give them to February 1.
Is there... There's no problem with that, is there, Greg?
No, there isn't. It's really at your option.
Okay.
I think it's a good suggestion.
Okay. Mr. Prince, did you have a comment?
I was going to say we should just set a date and not have to go back and extend unless absolutely necessary.
Yeah, it'll...
But I was going to say, let's go till after 1st of the year.
Okay.
That was what I was going to say.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay. Well, it looks like the council would like us to do that, so...
Okay.
We'll pick a date in February.
Okay.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to audience comment. Was there anybody that would like to address the council? Okay. Going on to the consent agenda. We have nine items for council consideration. Are there any items a council member would like polled for discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to poll item E.
Item E? Is it Edward? Any others?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corbin.
May I move approval of the consent agenda minus item E?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corbin, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council approve the consent agenda minus item E. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is... Item E is the Community Services Department submits a lease amendment to the Amazing Grace Lutheran Church, which is in the old City Hall. The council has already discussed this issue as far as financing and authorizing extra funds for the tenant improvements. So with that, I feel we should pass it tonight. We're not going to be here next week. It would just take a week or so away from their ability to get started. So with that, I move that the council concur with item E.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with item E rather than referring it to the Finance Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Corbin.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Person?
Well, we have a couple Finance Committee reports.
Okay, Finance Committee committee report. Approval of Claims and Payroll Vouchers. The Finance Committee approves for payment on February 22, 2016. Claims vouchers 344-913 through 345-291. Four wire transfers and one payroll run with benefit withholding payments totaling $5,42,562.22. And payroll vouchers, including 753 direct deposits and 93 payroll checks totaling $1,705,077.29. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The final Finance Committee report is regarding inter-local agreement with Valley Medical Center. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the inter-local agreement with Valley Medical Center for Valley Medical Occupational Health Services for 2016 in the amount of $73,365 and adopt the related resolution. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just a clarification on the report. There is no need to adopt a resolution tonight because other councils before us adopted a continuing resolution. And so I would... With that and adopt a resolution being stricken, I move the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
Yes, it's been moved and seconded to approve the recommendation of the Finance Committee. Jason, you look like you have some input.
Yes, that's a... There actually is a resolution for this. It's the ORCA Business Cards is the one...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Resolution.
I'm sorry. I got confused in what committee I was sitting in.
No problem.
So you...
So we need to adopt the resolution. I apologize.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to approve the Finance Committee report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Person. Ms. Witchy?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. McIrvin?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one committee report to present.
The Transportation Aviation Committee committee report. 2016, 2017 ORCA Business Cards and Business Passport Products Agreement. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement with King County Metro Transit for the purchase of ORCA Business Cards and ORCA Business Passport Products. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
I move that council concur with the recommend action of the Transportation Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Perez, seconded by Ms. Witchy, that council concur with the Transportation Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Perez.
There is not a need to adopt the resolution for this.
Okay, so this is the item in which we will pull Resolution C this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Pavoni?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Moving on to resolutions and ordinances. We have two resolutions, and we have a couple of ordinances.
Hey, the first resolution is regarding the imposition of state sales and use tax. The resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, authorizing the city of Renton to impose a sales and use tax as authorized by RGW 8214-415 as a credit against state sales and use tax relating to annexations.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
Just so for the public, this is not... We're not adding a tax. This is when the state passed the law, when we annexed big areas to help us fund them, that we got a portion of the state sales tax. So we're getting money from the state, which is unusual, to help us with the annexation. With that, I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that this resolution be adopted as read. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The second and final resolution is regarding the agreement with Valley Medical Center. A resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an inter-local agreement with Public Hospital District Number 1 of King County doing business as Valley Medical Center Occupational Health Services.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the council adopt a resolution as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Corbin, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Hey, we have an ordinance for first reading regarding abandoned shopping carts. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending Chapter 27 Shopping Cart Regulation of Title VI Police Regulations of City Code by clarifying regulations, adding definitions for administrator, identification sign, cart sign, and impounded cart, deleting the requirements for shopping cart retrieval and containment plans, and adding fines for violations of this chapter.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corbin.
I move this ordinance be placed on second and final reading I move this ordinance be placed on second, final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
The final ordinance is for second and final reading regarding the southeast one-sixty-fifth Street Special Assessment District. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, establishing an assessment district for sanitary sewer services for properties adjacent to southeast one-sixty-fifth Street, and establishing the amount of the charge upon connection to the facilities.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, seconded by Mr. Corman, that this ordinance be adopted as read, and it requires a roll call.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Ms. Witchy?
Aye.
Mr. McIrvin?
Aye.
Ms. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Ayes have it. Thank you very much, Jason. Moving on to new business, Mr. Corman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Let's see, a few announcements. Okay, first, this coming Thursday and Friday, we have city council retreat. So I'll just, February twenty-fifth, eight-thirty a.m. to four-thirty p.m. On that day of our retreat, which will happen at the Maplewood Greens Cedar Room, we're going to cover downtown revitalization and city council communication and process. And then that'll continue, same location on Friday, from eight-thirty to four-thirty p.m. We have seven items that we're gonna be discussing: capital improvement plan review, sidewalks, traffic congestion, Benson Hill Community Plan Update, annexation policy review, community involvement and programs, and business plan. And those are public meetings, so the public can attend if they're interested. And then I want to remind the public and the council, there's no meeting next week. It's a fifth Monday of the month. We don't have meetings on the fifth Monday of the month. And then, lastly, I noticed on the agenda, we have an executive session, and I think it's ordinary for me to, oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Okay, before we hit that, thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Prince. So Monday, March seventh, at six o'clock p.m., we have a committee of the whole meeting in the conferencing center, and that's Lodging Tax Funding Allocation Recommendations. And then, I'm just gonna ask, do we still, would I still ordinarily announce the executive session?
Well, you can, you're gonna recess us into executive session.
Okay, I'll just do it at that time. Okay.
Okay.
And that's all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Planning and Development Committee, regularly scheduled for February twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen, is canceled. I do want to mention one other thing. On President's Day, Councilmember Pavoni and I attended the African-American Pastoral Group Community Gathering up in Benson Hill, and it was a rich discussion with members of our police department and other city employees. We talked about employment, law and justice, education, and social issues. A lot of lively discussion from the forty or so community members that were there. It was a good event.
Well, we really appreciate you attending, and certainly, it's been great having the pastors and the police department working together, so thank you.
That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Person?
No new business.
Okay, Ms. Witchy?
Yes, the Community Services Committee meeting that is scheduled for Thursday, the twenty-fifth, has been canceled.
Okay, and Mr. McIrvin?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. There'll be a Utilities Committee on March seventh at four-thirty p.m. in the council conference room. Two items on the agenda: solid waste briefing and a wastewater briefing. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Perez?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, March seventh, two thousand and sixteen, at five p.m., there will be the Transportation Committee in the council conference room. There are two items in the agenda. The first one will be the southwest twenty-seventh street and Strander Boulevard extension, and the second would be emerging issues in transportation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pavoni?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Last chance for audience comment. Was there anybody who wanted to address the council? Mr. Corman?
Yes, I move that the council meeting recess into executive session for approximately twenty-five minutes to discuss labor negotiations, with no official action to be taken, and that the council meeting be adjourned when the executive session is adjourned.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that we recess into executive session for approximately twenty-five minutes to discuss the labor negotiations. Meeting will be adjourned following the executive session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?